Excuse me, I will close this meeting. Well, let's get it ready to be a day of honor.
Yeah. That's the other one, yeah. Doesn't need to have that too. That's the loss.
Here.
Doesn't need to be a really, yeah. I see my ideas on here. Doesn't need to be that.
Here. Uh, we have, here's your medical emergency. We do have a trustee who is, uh, logging via Zoom. Is there a motion to allow for, for a little participation of trustee boss? Say hi to us, say hi, John Arena. All those with their say hi.
Hi.
Does it pose any? To approve or render a participation? Your name, your business, will you call the time? Um, we have several, um, comments that have been submitted in writing in advance of the meeting. Uh, please, uh, did everyone who wants to, uh, make a public comment, uh, sign it on the sheet? And if they wanted to speak? Uh. Autumn?
Right now.
Yes. Did you want to speak?
No, I'm just giving my hat off.
Uh, Jenna?
I'm sorry, I think that was assigned to this.
Okay, well, there was a, there was not a yes or no. That's why I'm going to say, um, Jenna?
No.
Jenna? Wild?
In my hand.
And Terry?
Yeah.
I'm seeing my time to watch this. All right. One minute, second. Okay, one minute, the sheet, there is a.
I'm supposed to sign.
We're stuck in the back of the pile. Yeah, all the comments, uh, keep, uh, their, their comments to during this. Um, and so that all who wish to speak have the opportunity. Autumn?
Where are you at?
Uh, here. Go ahead.
Good evening, um, as you all know, my name is Wanta Benigrefin. I'm the multicultural learning coordinator of the Oak Park Public Library. This Saturday is my fourth year work anniversary and my family moved to Oak Park in nineteen seventy-six. I've seen our public library change over the course of my lifetime. I'm proud to be a part of a changing library. I'm a member of the anti-racism advisory team. We were charged with writing the board-approved anti-racism strategic plan. The anti-racism advisory team believed that we were doing our part to create an inclusive, equitable, safe space for everyone. Today, the plan seems more like a distant dream than actual living policy. It is a fact that the Palestinian cultural event was treated inequitably. The very first goal of the board-approved anti-racism, racism strategic plan clearly states institutional racism goal. The library will employ policies, protocols, processes, and procedures that promote and advance anti-racism practices, such as power, space, and resource sharing towards equitable, non-hierarchical program implementation. The very moment the executive director removed and ordered the removal of the Palestinian cultural event from the library calendar, she was in direct defiance of the board-approved anti-racism plan. The community has been led to believe that I emailed the ED and informed her that the Palestinian cultural event was not a library event. However, what she fails to mention is that I was on health leave when the event was removed from the library calendar. The email she made public was given to her the same day that I returned to the library after being instructed by past director Lori Pulliam and manager Chibi K. Enya to email Jocelyn Bowen Dixon the proposal for the event and every interaction I had with the Palestinian group to explain what kind of event this was. I explained in the email, it was not a library event. I'm approaching it as I did the Asian-American heritage celebration as a collaboration. In accordance with the board-approved anti-racism policy, the goal was to create a safe space for a marginalized people group by sharing resources intentionally and equitably. I called out the racist practices of our library leadership team and I have been publicly ridiculed and harmed because of it. I stood on the values of our community and the policy of our library and it doesn't matter what the intention of Jocelyn Bowen Dixon was, the impact of her decision caused harm to a marginalized community group and it took her months to give a public apology. And when I asked Jocelyn, is there room in this meeting to discuss the harm our library has caused to a marginalized community group? Her response was, what do you want me to be accountable for, Wanta? What do you want me to be accountable for? The short answer is, as the executive director, everything. Everything. Instead, she threw me and her administrative team under the bus and attempted to chalk it up as a miscommunication. I'm not going to get into the weeds of the unfortunate and unprofessional events that happened next. We saw them play out publicly in the Wednesday Journal, on Facebook, and by email. The leadership team turned our five-star library into a three-ring circus. In one year, our library went from leading the charge in equity and anti-racism work to harming vulnerable community members. In eliminating positions held by veteran librarians, vetting the community engagement team, terminating the restorative justice practitioner, silencing Stephen Jackson, the director of equity and anti-racism, she eliminated positions held by those without MLIS degrees, relocating, discarding, and downsizing the multicultural collection without contacting Lynn Allen, the last living curator. Amid all of this, she managed to narrow the leadership team and increase their salaries, create a deputy director position, and hire a personal assistant. This could have all ended months ago, restoratively, with empathy and accountability from the executive director. When it was time to walk the talk, we failed. The work of the community engagement team is important because we bring the library to those who do not have access to library services. We bridge the gap between community members that have traditionally felt unsafe or unwelcome in our library. The Oak Park Public Library is not traditional. It reflects the values and diversity of our village. We empower the voices of the underserved. We tell the stories of the unheard. We are modern-day griots. We are a sanctuary for banned books and we offer a sanctuary to people that are unhoused and in need of resources beyond literature. We provide programming for disabled patrons, the LB, LGB, LGBTQIA community, Arabs, Asians, Pacific Islanders, BIPOC adults, seniors, Latinx, Muslims, Christians, and the Jewish community. We collaborate with our neighbors and we allow them to tell their stories because we know that not all stories make it to the printing press. But they are worthy to be heard and as a community, we are made better for them. The community engagement team is restorative because we build relationships with patrons beyond traditional library service. We are better than any, we are not better than any other team. We do the work differently, but we are equally important. You may not see me at a desk yet. The same way I don't see them on Ninety-Fifth Street on a Sunday morning, purchasing one hundred yards of African fabric for a tea party, or hauling furniture in their truck for an idea box set. You may find us at the children's school, the township, or Hepsaba, leading restorative justice circles. We can be found at block club parties, summer festivals, laundromats, and senior homes. And sometimes, sometimes we tell the stories of our neighbors that have been firebombed during the civil rights movement and our research serves to create proclamations and legislations to help give landmark status to historical families like the Julians. We did that. We work differently, but we are working. We deserve a board and leadership that believes in our work and trusts us to do our jobs without micromanaging threats and hostile work environments. We are professionals and no one should have to work with their heads on a swivel. We are a library for everyone in peacetime and at war. The biggest thing that has been said that was a lie, I've been called a liar, is that this whole library-led, non-library-led thing. We have never in our department used the term library-led or non-library-led. All of our events are community-led. And once you have a meeting with me as a multicultural learning coordinator, I come beside you as a community member and I provide the resources that whatever you need, if we have as a library, we give it to them because that's what we do. This space is not ours, this building is not ours. It does not belong to the executive director, it does not belong to anyone, it belongs to the community. And so when someone sits beside me and says, this is what I mean, if that space is empty, if no one has it booked, yeah, I say, yeah, you can have that space. But these people, this group, these organizers, they met with me September the seventh and filled out the whole multicultural application. And here it is right now, that we asked the question, do you live in Oak Park? Do you have, how long have you lived in Oak Park? Proposal of a title, uh, Day of Palestinian, uh, Palestinian Culture. What is your goal for the program? We asked all these questions, they filled them out, they were working with me as a collaboration. There was no question about the status of this group. But when I came back from my medical leave, everything that I thought was solid had changed. What had changed? Who changed it? I wasn't here to change it. And so I'm not here to throw any one under the bus. If I have been thrown under the bus, I'm not here to say what's right and wrong, but I'm saying we have a policy. We have procedures in place to protect us from this very thing. We have, we say we are a restorative justice library, we stand on these things and yet, when it's time to practice it, when it's time to do it, when it's time for Stephen Jackson, the anti-racism, anti-racism director, to come in and say, this is this, and let's work through it, where are these people? Where is this practice? Where are the things, where are the tools that we give to, to the community to use? When they call us and say, hey, come over here because this is happening, we need a library. Well, I need a library right now. I need a library.
Wanda?
My remarks are pretty informal because I was sorting through all of this. You all know that this institution's beloved by this community. I've lived here forty-seven years, my children came through here weekly. You've inspired me in the last few years with the policies and the framework you've set. But on the other hand, I wasn't surprised because Wanta was part of that. Wanta has taken leadership throughout this community. She's been on the point. She's courageous, she's articulate. And when I heard this happened, I was, I was confused, I was disturbed. Want to help the village of Oak Park finally move forward with the racial equity and social justice framework. So I'm not surprised when I come up here for the history fairs, Black History Month, to be inspired by the honor her work brings to this community and those people who have lived here in the past and the present and will be here in the future. And all my years here, only once has there been a situation in a governing body where the executive officer was asked to resign. It happened almost forty years ago in District Ninety-Seven. It involved a free speech case where two teachers were in federal court fighting for their job and the whole district was, board was deposed, that the superintendent was found guilty. And it cost the district a lot of money. So something's, something's not right here. We've reached this point. And I hope it can be restored and the peace can be restored. You know, high school and the elementary school, five years ago, put together a racial equity framework after many years of, of talking about it. But there, and you've done something similar, but that's not enough. You all know it's about follow-through, you all know it's about accountability. Paper documents, as we know, are honored and important, but they're only paper. It's how we live by those principles and how we hold each other accountable. I hope you can do that. And I hope you can restore Wanta's faith and risk, stay in the institution. Thank you.
What a word. Wanta didn't use my time, and so it's okay, I'd like to use. Uh, Kate Paul?
Hello. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I know it's required by the open review, that, but it's still appreciated. My name's Kate Paul. I am a colleague of Jocelyn's, who I have known for over twenty years now and have watched her as she has tried to navigate, navigate a historically white profession with diplomacy, with honor, uh, and integrity, while somehow remaining completely inauthentically herself. I have the pleasure of working at the Northbrook Public Library. I also, um, have written, um, the book, The Public Library Director's Toolkit, which tells about how to actually run a public library. As elected officials, I'm sure you are all aware that your job is to hire and retain a qualified library director. And I know, because I lived in Oak Park for over a decade, that you take that role very seriously. I am concerned at what I have been seeing. I am concerned that a library that appeared to be heading the charge on reducing systemic inequities in the library profession is actually perpetuating further harm. It, it is, our library has been on a similar EDI path, though not as, um, for, not, not as long as Oak Park has. And we have watched what Jocelyn has done in the last year and hope that someday we would be at a place where we could be following in Oak Park's footsteps. And now instead, what I am seeing is exactly what we saw happen at Harvard University, where their first black woman president was targeted and harmed and removed from her position. And it is devastating to me to see a black woman in Jocelyn's position in a field that has been dominated by white people for so many years, be harmed and targeted and, um, told that she is not doing her job, when what she is doing is actually holding people accountable. What she is doing is the hard work of navigating bomb threats, dealing with challenging staff, working in the community so that all of the voices that represent this wonderfully diverse and vibrant community are heard. And so when I watched previous board meetings and heard what was going on and talked to Jocelyn and said, what, what, I don't understand, the board has always seemed so smart, so intelligent, and Oak Park has always seemed like a library that deserved their five-star ranking. I agree that they do not right now. And it is because I'm not seeing a board supporting its library director during times when Jocelyn created the second-only book sanctuary community. She led that charge. She has done so much in her incredibly short time here. And to see a board back away from support for their director is so deeply upsetting and so problematic, as we have seen happen in other libraries. This will have ripple effects across the nation. Jocelyn is nationally recognized and beloved and supported by people in the library profession all over this country. Her voice is so important. And to think that she will no longer have the ability to lead this library and to think that the board would consider removing her from her position is, um, it is deeply disappointing. And I, I know that you all are smarter than that, I hope you're all smarter than that. Um, and I hope you remember that the world is watching, the community is watching, and that while we have heard from a, um, very small minority, a very vocal, but small minority, that you remember that there are many other voices that maybe haven't had the opportunity or the chance to come forward. And to think about what your job is as elected officials, granted unpaid elected officials. But th- this is hard work that you're doing. And the most important work you could be doing right now is supporting your executive director in the hard work she's trying to do to move this library forward. Thank you for your time.
No. Uh, Mary Davis Fournier?
Hi. Shaking my glasses to go on. Hi, my name is Mary Davis Fournier. Um, I am a grad, can you? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was somebody in here. Start again, my name is Mary Davis Fournier. I'm a graduate of Oak Park and River Forest High School. And I've, in the past, served on the friends of the Oak Park Library Board. I'm raising my family here. I've been a proud library supporter, user, and Oak Park resident for my, most of my adult life. I am also the executive director of the Public Library Association. I speak to you today, though, as a proud Oak Parker who also happens to bring a national perspective on libraries and the communities they serve. When Jocelyn Boeing Dixon came to OPPL as a nationally-regarded library leader, I was so proud of my library and my community. And today, I am deeply dismayed and confused by what I have seen unfold concerning our library. I've seen it play out in the public forum of social media and in the unprofessional coverage of the local newspaper. Many issues seem to be intermingled and they are confusing. Program policy and process, staff complaints about and staff support for the director, miscommunication and harm, deep harm, public apologies by both the director and this board of trustees, all against the backdrop of a library budget being brought back from years of deficit spending. And now I'm hearing that the director's resignation is being discussed. And I am confused and concerned as an Oak Park resident and library user. Our public library is this community's most treasured public asset, open and available and accessible to everyone. This is a very, very difficult time for public libraries, for libraries, for library leadership, for library workers, and for library boards. This is true in many places across this country. Yet, when I look at Oak Park Public Library and most public libraries in this country, I look at how they monitor their impact, everything that has already been spoken about, that Oak Park Public Library does so well. And I look at that data. And that data is found not only in sources I access, but on this library's website under Impact. These are the results of the important work that takes place in every aspect of what the library does. And what I see is that since Director Boeing Dixon started every single key performance indicator used by this community, library cardholders, likelihood to recommend to others, all of these indicators have gone up, straight up, since she started. And directors are responsible for the failures and the successes of their libraries. What is happening here is being noticed. It is being noticed by municipalities and libraries and community members beyond Oak Park. And as trustees, I know that you think and care deeply about the reputation of our library and its ability to effectively serve our community. And as a concerned community member, I urge you to move very carefully and with full consideration. Please follow through with the input you have said you seek through anonymous staff evaluation and through, and use it to inform your next steps. Hear all the voices. Please think very carefully about ensuring that all voices are heard. Please do not act with undue haste in this matter. Thank you.
Uh, Matt?
Evening, everybody. It's Matt Bartoje, Director of Facilities of Oak Park Public Library. Dear Board of Library Trustees, your leadership team is asking you to do what you promised in your statement. It is important that we proceed with thoughtfulness and intention so that we can be confident that the steps we take next are in service of true and meaningful change. We believe that the board and staff cannot be at cross purposes. We need a unified effort to restore accountability and rebuild trust. A holistic strategy, not a piecemeal strategy. With Jocelyn Bowling Dixon as our executive director, we have worked effectively and efficiently to advise, collaborate, and share our expertise in setting and executing strategic priorities with intention and integrity. We want to continue that work with Jocelyn as our director and continue to build a library for everyone. As elected officials who represent this entire community and say they support all library staff, please consider what we are asking. Please ask yourselves what legacy you want to leave from your time on this board. Sign, Matt Bartoje, Director of Facilities, Jody Colo, Director of Communications and Development, Lee Turlo, Director of Collections, Billy Trees, Director of Finance and HR, and Susie Wolf, Deputy Director and Director of Public Services and Programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Grove?
Forgive me, I'm reading off my phone, so I didn't even look, so I'm going to. My name is Jennifer Grove and Jennifer Norbert spoke on my behalf last week when I was at a community event. And I'm unable to be here, I'm pleased to be here and have the opportunity this week to reiterate my support for Jocelyn as the library's most effective leader in the fifteen years that I have worked here. I'm also an Oak Park resident and this library made me want to be a librarian. Uh, I was first a patron and when the time came for a shift in my life, the library and the joy and the passion that was shown here, um, inspired me. I made the hard choice to go back to library school for my master's in library science and I spent four years earning that degree. While also being a stay-at-home mom, I was part-time library assistant as well and I've been a full-time librarian here for twelve years. Uh, but I did receive no tuition reimbursement from library at that time, only gave a tuition reimbursement to full-time staff. So I appreciate that that has been amended since that time. But I took on student loans and debt from my family so that I could do this job with the knowledge and respect I really think it requires. Uh, Jocelyn's the third director I worked under and the first that made me feel truly seen as a whole person. She's improved our work-life balance as staff, while simultaneously doing the very hard work of correcting the overspending that previous directors and previous boards approved. Being a library executive director is a very complex job and it's difficult for people outside our industry and even within our industry to fully comprehend. There are a lot of angry people in this room and none of them have dedicated their lives to libraries in the way that Jocelyn has. She's not a local leader alone, as we've heard. She is nationally recognized as an expert, as an advocate. Last week, she was in Washington DC speaking to senators on behalf of public libraries and the unique precious institutions they are for this country. But meanwhile, here in Oak Park, people are calling to not even give her a chance to get to the bottom of an internal problem and make sure it doesn't happen again. Apologies have been issued and now I'd really like to move forward to figure out where problems have come, where has staff been improperly trained, how can we correct that? So broken promises and confusion don't happen again. There's obviously been a disconnect, uh, between departments and between staff. It's upsetting me to believe that the elected trustees of our board, who, like, a hundred and fourteen people, by my last count, who signed a letter, affect this decision about the library, that employs more people than are even signed to that letter. That's, a hundred and fourteen people is point two-one percent of Oak Park. Some of us, four hundred and fourteen. Some of us, 414 names are children. I think we can do better. And I'm looking forward to participating in a staff survey so I can give this feedback as well. And I'm really hopeful that this board will find a lot of illuminating things in that survey and hear from a lot of staff more loudly than any Facebook rants could provide. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Griffin. Most people in the community know me as Wanta's husband. As you all can imagine, it's been extremely stressful in our household as of late. Wanta's done her best to serve the Oak Park community with integrity, honor, and with class. Since she was a teenage employee at the small daycare center on Madison Avenue. She has been invested and engaged in this community since before she joined the wonderful community engagement team at the library. She has helped to look after and mentor the children of this community since she was a teenager. Many of those children are now parents in this community to this day. She also has helped to mentor her former students since she also children and she continues to do the work that this community needs. Wanta's also been an activist for the Oak Park community, leading charges against racism in all its forms and inequality in all its forms, since she was a student in Oak Park River Forest High School. No, it doesn't matter the color, creed, or whatever that is. She's led that fight against racism and inequality. So you can imagine how our entire family felt when we saw her name in the paper to be used as a scapegoat for the lack of leadership and integrity from the executive director and deputy director. The article could have put our family in serious danger, not knowing the vicinity in which we live to certain religious groups in this community. With the executive director and deputy directors lacking empathy, transparency, honesty, and integrity, miss was how Wanta has established all of those traits in the Oak Park community for years. However, however, the article, the lies and actions from those who have led my wife to experience stress, anxiety, countless nights of sleepless nights, it has caused Wanta to battle within herself because she has been bullied into silence and placed in a position where she felt she could not defend herself due to possible employment termination. Leadership of the two directors or a lack thereof has caused a toxic environment to develop within the library. A leader is in charge of creating a positive work environment. And since those two have been in charge, there has been nothing but tension, rumors, lies, deceit, and separation of library. Coworkers not being able to trust each other, speak out, they're being pitted against each other due to toxic leadership style that has to be removed. What some make it wrong about Wanta is they think because of her leadership style that she's after someone else's job, that she's looking to move up the ladder. Wanta enjoys and loves her job. There is always a sense that people need to look over their shoulders and fear Wanta trying to overtake their position. That is simply not true. She loves to inspire and motivate people to do the work that is necessary for the betterment of the people within the community. We both are fans of people taking work that has done, that she has done and try and take credit for it. However, her hope is that you be inspired by her work to find the next person or community member to serve. Wanta's connected to a very high-profile network that she is connected to that network due to her hard work and integrity. Her network shows up for her because she shows up for them. Her community shows up for her because she does the work that is necessary for them. She does not use her network to gain power, but to provide access for those that need and deserve it. Leaders don't fear strong leaders. They learn how to work with them and collaborate with them. The current leader only knows how to deflect and blame and is not willing to be held accountable for her actions. Part of the deputy director's recent actions show that they lack integrity and true leadership skills. I am sure if some research was done, you will find that they, that their lack of leadership skills and lack of integrity has shown up in previous places of employment. The lackluster apology that was posted is not enough for the damage that was caused by trying to besmirch Wanta's good name and reputation in the community that she has worked so hard for since she's been a member of this community since 1976. Whereas others just visit. They're just here working a job and they go back to wherever community they come from. She lives in this community. She loves this community. She does her best to serve this community at all times. I'm asking the board to do the right thing and consider the leadership style that it's caused. For in my own, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, members of the community. My name's Tim Molinevich. I was here last week to discuss the fact checker, which has a great amount of biased information on it that unfortunately is still up. Tonight, I'm here to address a couple of things that were mentioned last week that I was surprised by. And were kind of mentioned again tonight. And that's in particular, this counter narrative that is going around. There's right now a counter narrative that a group of activists and a group of upset library employees are in some way conspiring, Aaron Rodgers style, against the executive director and harming a high-profile African-American woman. Here's the problem. Who's speaking up for Wanta? Who's speaking up for Tatiana? Last time I checked, they were African-American too. Who's supporting us? This is the concern here. People talk about wanting to support Jocelyn and they bring up the Harvard president. But this is a situation where we're having African-American employees who one after another seem to be impacted negatively. Whatever the intentions might be, we're now up to three. We also have a situation where the DEI office was removed with the intentionality and the phrasing of, everybody does this. We don't need DEI. That's something that sounds like it comes from Florida. Now, I also want to say, I was shocked to be, to hear that I was an activist. I'm not. My name is Tim Molinevich. I'm a dad. I'm a dad who got tired of his son and people like his son being treated differently than other members of this community. I am a husband who is tired of his wife being treated differently in this community because they have a different last name, because they have a different background. My understanding is libraries were supposed to listen to different minority groups, to celebrate different minority groups, to celebrate different heritages, not to tell people, well, you're a minority. We don't want to hear you. You're a vocal minority. We don't want to hear from you. What kind of library does that? Maybe a library that just cuts DEI office. This library offers community an investigation and an understanding of what happened. In terms of how it finalizes, I don't know. The investigation needs to take place and no, Jocelyn should not be leading the investigation. She's part of what's being investigated. That is a conflict of interest. But investigation does need to go forward. And all the individuals that came forward to speak for Jocelyn are not speaking about the fact checker. They're not speaking about the employees who have been impacted. They're not speaking about the redacted emails. They're not speaking about all of the issues that have come up and the perhaps misuse of resources in this process while this investigation should be going on. I trust this board who has said, we need to move forward with an investigation to do so. What I need to speak about and what I wanted to speak about here is the confusion of counter narratives that are coming forward are not speaking to a number of the facts that are at hand. A library should do exactly that. To see librarians pick and choose their facts for their own narrative is problematic. This board needs to move forward, not just so a majority benefits, but so that everyone benefits in this community. If that means taking the ED after a formal apology, a good apology where it says, who was harmed and how? Great. But we got to remember, this wasn't an outside group. These were high school kids that wanted to put forward this proposal. The bias against them has harmed them and that needs to be apologized for. That requires accountability. Thank you.
There was a comments, feedback from last week that I was not heard well, while reading the in-person comments. So I'm removing the microphone for that purpose. I'll proceed with reading the submitted comments through our form. Keith Strum. I do not claim to understand all the particulars surrounding the recent controversy surrounding the Oak Park Public Library and its leadership. But I'm aware that both its executive director and the library board have issued apologies and pledged to take actions as deemed necessary to regain the community's trust. Having read the open letter from Freedom to Thrive Oak Park Community Group, certainly their concerns and suggested actions are worthy of consideration. However, their call for the immediate resignation of the library's top leadership team is not an action one would argue is in the best interest of all. Further, upon review of the 80 signatures to this letter, I reminded of those signatures that do not have borne it. Which are the vast majority of the 54,000-plus residents who are served by the library. Humbly, I would submit, refrain from making decisions near the tipping points of the pendulum. Consensus is better sought and found from a place closer to the equilibrium where the library board can best determine the equitable means to both keep their promise and empower the library leadership and staff who otherwise keep their, theirs and fulfilling their duties and service to the entire community. Thank you for your time and service to the Oak Park community. Apologies for likely mispronunciation. DeShave, counselor. I'm submitting this letter in support of Ms. Jocelyn Bowling Dixon. I feel she is being unjustly targeted for something she has apologized for. I feel no ill will was present for all the backlash that is occurring. This group of individuals wants to throw away the work and accomplishments of Ms. Bowling Dixon over a misunderstanding. I find that to be too utterly pointless. Ms. Bowling Dixon obviously was and is head and shoulders above the other candidates who were vying for the executive director position because she got the position. Let Ms. Bowling Dixon continue to do that job that she earned by being qualified and accomplished. There should be a time to have all the parties sit down and discuss the specifics and work collaboratively to reach a common ground. Then we will truly model the inclusive and diverse community we think we already are. John W. Berry. As a past president of the 55,000-member American Library Association and longtime resident of River Forest, I have been very disappointed to read of the controversy surrounding what is arguably one of the state Illinois' best and well-respected public libraries and neighboring Oak Park, serving nearly 55,000 diverse community members. All public libraries rely on a board of trustees and staff who understand and respect each other and the community they serve. Their primary responsibility of the board is to hire an executive director who in turn hires and manages the staffing coordination with the board, but does not involve the board in the daily management of library activities. Micro-management is decidedly not the role of the library board. In addition, board members communicate with library leadership through the board president, not directly with individual library staff. What appears to have been some misunderstanding of library communication policies does occasionally happen and should generally be addressed by board and staff in straightforward manner without controversy. That some community members may question board and staff offers the opportunity to clarify any misunderstanding for the community as a whole, most of whom strongly believe in the multitude of excellent library service to community members. It is my hope that the board and staff can put this matter behind and get on with the business of providing top-quality information services to a population who trust and appreciate the library as a cultural gem in the village of Oak Park. John W. Berry, ALA President, 2000, 2001. A Joe Prin Professor of Practice School of Information Science, East Dominican University. Barbara Fitzgerald. To the board of trustees in the Oak Park community, I wanted to share today my unwavering support for Jocelyn Bowling Dixon as the Executive Director of the Oak Park Public Library. Her vision, guidance, and professionalism have been what the library needs to move us out of COVID protocols and position us to thrive in the future. My interactions with Jocelyn since she arrived at the library have been positive and collaborative. Jocelyn has been the most transparent and available executive director I have worked with in my 20 years of library experience. I am sharing with this with the knowledge of multiple team members who believe in Jocelyn but are uncomfortable openly sharing their support. Many of these team members live in the community and are afraid of being attacked on social media or being named in local papers. Moreover, they are afraid of retribution from a small number of staff members and the library board. They are looking forward to sharing their thoughts in the forthcoming anonymous survey. The past several weeks have been difficult. As a library team, we value the library and our community members and want to do good work to support them. My hope is we can continue to do the amazing work for which OPPL is known under the guidance of Jocelyn and the leadership team. With respect and hope, Barbara Fitzgerald, Manager of Collection Services, Oak Park Public Library. Alison Lipsom. I'm sorry I cannot attend tonight's meeting in person as I am attending Lincoln Elementary School meeting. I am submitting my comments in strong support of the library director of Communications, Jody Colow, a kind, caring professional who is passionate about the public library system and is deeply proud of Oak Park's amazing library. Jody does not deserve to be caught up in the tailspin of people's anger about how the Palestinian cultural event was handled. Jody goes above and beyond in her advocacy for the library and commitment to her work. Jody is not responsible for budget cuts that resulted in staffing changes. She is not responsible for people in the community feeling anger or disappointment and she is not responsible for some staff at the library being unhappy. In addition, I implore the board to please take a moment to not get caught up in the anger of a group of community members, the vast majority of whom are not library staff, so do not have firsthand experience on the reports of staff's dissatisfaction. I was very pleased to read reporting of the head of children's, of the head children's librarian saying she speaks for other staff members that are happy at work. Please not get caught up in hearing only from one group of people who bring one perspective. In Oak Park, we value diversity of thought. We value diverse, different perspectives and we value learning from mistakes and things not going perfectly. Please give our library executive director, a highly respected black woman who joined the library after an extremely purposeful search and deputy director a chance to earn back the trust of this one group of people. Please do not let Jody get pulled into this awkward war and have the library miss out on the talents, passion, and dedication of this very committed professional. Thank you. Ashley Spell. As a resident, as an Oak Park resident for 15 years, I consider the Oak Park Public Library a beacon, guiding our community through both quotidian and unprecedented times. The library has grown with my children. It has tackled different, difficult societal conversation and it has remained a relevant and reliable source of all. For all. Much of this is owing to Jody Colow, the Director of Communications and Development. For 12 years, Ms. Colow has amplified diverse voices, programs, and resources as the library's spokesperson. She has worked with library staff and community members and volunteers to advance the library's mission and ensure that it continues to thrive for the sake of the community. She brings a unique blend of community-centered thoughtfulness and professional excellence to her work. I find this situation extraordinarily troubling and implore the board of trustees to think as individuals and consider the facts. Jody Colow is an exemplary member of the Oak Park library team and an outstanding member of our community. I support her wholeheartedly and encourage the trustees to do the same. Respectfully, Ashley Spell. Jennifer Norberg. Dear Oak Park Library Board and Oak Park community, I would like to reiterate my support for library director Jocelyn Bowling Dixon, whom I supported last week with my colleagues Jennifer Grove and Shelley Harris. Jocelyn is an exemplary leader who has many years of experience in the library world in multiple positions. She loves libraries and is a visionary who truly understands library work. Jocelyn is also an outspoken and forthright, something I feel has been held against her by a minority of current staff who have a personal grievance and loud voices they use to amplify their dubious claims of persecution. As a longtime library employee, I look forward to expressing my thoughts further on the planned staff survey. And as an Oak Park resident, I look forward to the board's response to said survey. And as an Oak Park resident, I look forward to the board's response to said survey. Sincerely, Jeff Jennifer Norberg, Children's Services Manager of Park Public Library. Mandy McGee. It is it Oak Park Board Trustees, the decision made today to fire Jocelyn Bowling Dixon today is beyond unacceptable. Considering the very clever timing of said decision, hardly offering staff or the community any time to respond before tonight's special meeting. This letter is brief. I don't have time to go into the reasons why this is such an unacceptable and unethical decision here. I'll leave that for Saturday. However, I will point to the statement made by the board February twenty ninth where you say this, we are pursuing a process to open avenues for anonymous anonymous staff feedback through an external service provider. We are doing this to include staff voices in our evaluation process of leadership. Clearly, you failed to follow through on this promise. I know for a fact there are staff who are very much waiting for this anonymous way to speak up and are devastated that this isn't going to happen. All this, all of this talk about how concerned the board is about staff being silenced, and here you go doing it yourself. Hypocrisy at its finest. That's what you seem to do best these days. I know I'm not the only community member who's outraged by such a rash unwarranted decision. Putting personal affiliations ahead of facts, acting in an entirely self-serving manner, you have no business leading our library. Jocelyn is such an incredibly well-respected leader within the library community at large, and I am deeply saddened that she will not get to continue leading OPPL into greatness. Mandy McGee. Rachel Walker. To the Oak Park Library Board of Trustees, I regret I cannot attend tonight's meeting in person. I'm submitting my comments in strong support of library director of Communications, Jody Colo. A kind caring professional who is passionate about the library, public library system, and is deeply proud of Oak Park's amazing library. Jody does not deserve to get caught up in the tailspin of people's anger about how the Palestinian cultural event was handled. Jody goes above and beyond in her advocacy for the library and commitment to her work. Jody is not responsible for budget cuts that resulted in staffing changes. She is not responsible for people in the community feeling anger.
Yes, this is uh that is similar to Allison Lipsom's. This is um Samuel Allof also submitted the same language in some um as Rachel Walker.
Deidre Brennan, as a former executive director of OPPL, I know how important the library is to the community, the entire community. The board is elected by and represents the entire community. It is your responsibility to see beyond the opinions of a small community group and make decisions based on facts, not emotions. Camille Galther. I'm ready to convey how much I appreciate working at the library with Jocelyn Dixon as director. Time and again, she has shown how much she cares about both our community and us as staff. She has pushed for transparency between leadership and staff. Then she began here at the library, I have felt informed and tied in, even as an employee who doesn't work directly with leadership. Within her first few months here, my colleagues and I met her personally several times as she made her priority to engage with employees in all work areas. Something I have not experienced in other places I have worked. I have particularly been grateful for the quarterly chats she hosts with staff where she and the HR director inform us of library updates and welcome feedback. Who lost my space here? Feedback on how the library is doing. Anytime a change is made, she communicates to emphasize the importance of its impact on our DEI work and the ways in which it will better serve the Oak Park community. Not only does she do her best for staff, but I know she goes into community meeting with community leaders and visiting schools, building relationships and trust wherever she can. She has a clear vision for the library, and I greatly trust in her competence and ability to bring it to life. I live in the Oak Park community and am always proud to say I work here. I constantly hear positive things from patrons who visit. And I often hear from friends and neighbors of the respect they have for our library. Of the organizations where I have worked, Jocelyn has been far by far the best director in terms of clarity of focus, care for employees' well-being, and approachability. Her leadership has made me feel confident in the work we do as a library, and I look forward to continuing to do the important work with her at the helm. Sharon Gaudier. Members of the board, I earnestly ask you to exercise patience and balance in your handling of recent complaints leveled at the director and library leadership. In yesterday's Wednesday Journal, I read that the board will be conducting a staff survey to assess employee morale and allow employees to safely share concerns. It seems reasonable and prudent then that no extreme measure should be taken until that survey is complete and the results are reviewed. I understand that you are in a tricky predicament. You have voices calling for change, and you may feel like you must respond swiftly. However, true leadership should not be swayed by shifting winds and loud voices. I remember reading updates on the process to find and select the new director in two thousand and twenty-two. If I recall correctly, the process took many months. You come to the country narrowed it down to a few very talented options and then unanimously selected whom you thought would be the best for the job unanimously. Now, after all that diligent painstaking effort, you would dismantle it all within a couple of weeks. Does the loudest voice get to chart the direction of a library? Will the library leadership change every time someone makes a decision or decisions that someone doesn't like? How can that be called leadership? Voters like myself selected you because you we considered you to be fair, wise, and balanced. I sincerely urge you to show those qualities in this situation. Please look at all the angles before making any rash decisions. From my perspective, Jocelyn Bowling Dixon has been an outstanding director. I have eagerly looked forward to the library blooming in her care. She has been there for only sixteen months and has already seemed to have a positive impact. It takes wisdom, patience, and time to build something great. As Winston Churchill once said, to build may have to be the slow and laborious task of years. To destroy can be thoughtless, can be a thoughtless act in a single day. May the board not destroy in a single day what you and the library leadership have begun to build with the selection of Miss Bowling Dixon. Kara Sharad blush. Dear board members, I'm sorry I cannot attend tonight's meeting in person. I have, I am submitting my comments in support of Executive Director Jocelyn Dixon, Deputy Director Suzie Wolf, and the Director of Communications, Jody Colo. My entire family uses the public library system regularly and has for nearly eight years we've lived in Oak Park. We are profoundly grateful for the work of these individuals and their staff to create an institution that is welcoming a welcoming place and a rich resource for the entire community. None of these individuals deserve to be caught up in the tailspin of people's angers about how the Palestinian cultural event was handled. I hope the board will pause thoughtfully to to thoughtfully consider the concerns and interests of all community members. Not just the loud voices of an angry group with no grasp of what it takes for the library to function and to serve the community. We vote for the board members to be thoughtful, responsible stewards of this vital community institution, not knee-jerk reactionaries who hold the jobs and and futures of dedicated employees hostage when dissent arises and the virtue signaling pylon of criticism begins. I am in full support of conversation and debate around the conflicts in our community and the world at large. They do not necessitate the dismissal of dedicated professionals to strive to serve our community and uphold the work of everyone at the library. Even if these leaders are not able to earn back trust of our whole community, at least take the time to consider where taking such traumatic action would leave this institution if you move so rashly in the face of every moment of discord. Thank you, and thank you for your service to the library and the community. Andrew Lipsom. Jody Colo is the most dedicated public servant I've met in Oak Park and an incredible ambassador for the Oak Park Public Library. Any suggestion that she should resign over this issue ignores her many years of public service would not deliver justice, and the community of Oak Park would be worse off if the board caves into those egregious developments. Lisa Walker. This is similar uh language uh related to support of uh Jody Colo as the other uh two earlier messages. Camille Dancer. My name is Camille Dancer, Executive Assistant to the Executive Director here at Oak Park Public Library. I have been working at the Oak Park Public Library for thirteen years. I am also a resident of Oak Park for twenty years. I take pride in the work I do and the impacts I have, I truly have made in my role and throughout the years I have been here in Oak Park Public Library. I am very grateful, humbled to be in my role and and work with her and the leadership team because of the many collaborative and individual things I do for the team and the community. I feel inspired and empowered by Jocelyn. Ever since she has been the executive director of the library, she has amplified this strategic direction, values, and priorities here and has continuously taken the library outward with the leadership she brings. She brings transparency and new initiatives to the library community. I appreciate Jocelyn and her outward thinking and approach when it comes to the strategic priorities we have in place at the library. Engagement, learning, stewardship, and equity in anti-racism. She has been an amazing executive director that shows admirable and commendable leadership to her team and to everyone. Kevin Brown. As a twenty-year resident of Oak Park, I am concerned in the growing pressure to give into cancel culture that has crept into our society. In no way do I support the remove for removal of Jody Colo from her position in the Oak Park Public Library. We should determine who occupies these roles based on their merit, skill, and experience. We should not be in the business of firing pro employees out of protest, Kevin Brown. That includes uh public comments. The next item of business uh first, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to both that both submitted and came in person to share their thoughts with us. The next item is our unfinished business of our staff survey. Um we discussed this last week. Suzanne, were you able to get any information on Yardstick?
I connected with them, um but they do something, they set up an appointment through somebody else to set up an appointment. So, um, yeah, um. So I spoke with the first person today, but she didn't answer really any of the questions um and can try and set up something with one of us tomorrow. Um, so I wanted to check out everybody who might be available to do that. Um. They might be out of our price range anyway. So.
Did you get a sense of what the price range was?
But yeah, the person I was speaking with, I don't know which they they actually knew, but um possibly ten to fifteen thousand. But I couldn't understand if that was a one-time or uh ongoing or she really didn't have much information, and the person who handles this is the specialist in this um is having to speak with somebody tomorrow.
I do not have availability tomorrow. So I don't know if anybody would have time to be able to speak with someone from Yardstick tomorrow during their workday.
Yeah, I probably could. We have a pretty open schedule tomorrow.
Okay, and I'll try and connect that up. Yeah, it is definitely something that I do. I was able to find that out. You know, that they do um staff surveys. And uh but I just I I couldn't get, I shot the message. She left a message. I talked to somebody.
With these calls, is it just going through those questions that we developed, or is it? What should I be asking, I guess?
Would be able to answer them. Um. They did get the names. Jenny, hold on. Can't control finding emails in our many, many emails here.
Based on um that that I mean if that if that is the ballpark of their price range, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars for and a one-time survey.
Right, that's the thing that I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
She wasn't sure whether it was one time or um or ongoing. Uh it just, she just really was trying to answer the questions but not able to.
Okay.
So just kept saying Jenny can be able to answer that. Jenny can talk to you about it. No, I'll connect you.
Yeah, if you can get that information, because I think otherwise, I think I would suggest that we um reach out to Adam Goodman at Northwestern to have him come to our meeting at the end of the month. Our regular board meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Can he come just to like to talk to us about it, or is he gonna charge for that?
He's gonna charge for it.
Okay.
It's, he was very clear about that. It's like, because he, he wants us to be committed to this process and not just want to talk about it. He he wants us to take it seriously and and that is.
We can't just, we can promise that we're very serious and.
Yeah, yeah.
Jennifer Sade, S A D. And some of the companies I've worked with before are inroads over in that trying to do something, the mission continues.
What did you say the name of it was?
Yardstick. And they were purchased by um diversified search group. So the art stick, but uh under the umbrella of diversified search group. So I just, I want to be clear, all the all the timelines that we've run, the fastest is sixty-seven weeks.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah, and and it seems that the the conversation I had with Charmed and with Adam um or both, that the that the longer period of time would be probably around the development of the questions. Um, and then depending on, it might be additional time for like the two weeks depending on the response rate. But the likely longest part of that would be the development of the questionnaire. And depending on how much we change it and we go back and forth on that with them. Um, and of course, you know, the longer the the survey, the longer it takes to compile and analyze uh to get us feedback for, you know, so that's also part of that calculus is looking at, you know,
No, I.
number of connected questions.
I don't want to be, it's hard because I don't want to be scared of asking the right question. This is very, very important. You don't want to get it wrong. We want to be thoughtful and invite as much staff response as possible. Making sure that we have support, not support, making sure that we give staff enough time to lead the round. I know in their estimate, they're saying this entire process is, you know, the bulk of it being the survey building, and then I think that last piece is going to take longer.
Can you remind me what they said about ongoing instead of just a one-time?
In terms of?
Like having um having this as something that.
Let's say one little or just like.
I did not have a conversation with Adam about it being simple. It was a, it was my conversation was solely based off the mindset of this being for this.
Because we left our last meeting about the um about the survey as thinking we were heading more in the direction of wanting it for something.
Yeah, we.
I think it was a both band, right?
Yeah, that was my sense of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Like our our top priority was getting something engaged as soon as, as soon as we could, but you know, that is as as good, you know, a good fit for for the purposes of our season. So um so Christina will try and connect with um Yardstick tomorrow.
Sure. Together to, sorry, so or we have meetings happening, right?
Yes.
And I'm listening on the agenda, but.
Yeah, it won't be.
It won't be, yeah. We can't add any act uh additional action items to it. We could, we could discuss it, but yeah. Yes, we could, like, we could add, I mean, that we don't, we could have discussion of items that are not currently listed on the agenda.
I just, just to get an update, I know that I'm I'm not going to be here for the meeting at the end of March because I'm going to be again. I will really be trying to follow that, but you know. No, I.
I understand. I I appreciate that, but also I want to like respect your your need to be where you're going to be. And and I don't want to put that additional burden on you.
Sure, but this is very, this task everybody is very important.
It is.
So that's why I was just hoping that. So that's why I was just hoping that we can just have some updates even.
That's what I was gonna ask. Do we get the answers from the other two, from the questions that we developed?
I had the, I did not send them to Adam yet. Just because everything else that's been going on this week. But uh, and I, I had the sense that we were not interested in pursuing with, with Charmed.
That's right, yeah.
So, but I can definitely send those to Adam tonight to see what he can, what he's willing to provide answers on.
I think if we do that, we have similar answers on both. We can determine who needs to come to the regular meeting, you know.
And then like we could share out their answers to the full board before that meeting so that we have a sense, right? Yeah.
When you're at that meeting. Okay. So we, we have, so I just want to make notes. Okay. With that.
Was the action supposed to be a vote on who we went with?
If, if we were there, we clearly are not there yet, so we will not be taking action tonight. All right.
Maybe we'll take out, so I know you said that I have maybe a sample.
I will, I would, I'll ask him about that.
That's a good, I was thinking that's a good question. It adds our.
I think we had that in there.
If we, we might.
Something about that is that if they have, if they have like.
What is your standard lab bar?
But maybe there was a.
Something that they, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just Charmed, Charmed send us.
It doesn't say sample.
Okay. I thought there was something, I think, oh, I think it was like, do you have a sort of an out of a, out of a box that you, that you've used, that you've a starting point for us, or we're not making a whole list from scratch? I think that was the question on the.
There's question six, do you have model surveys from other clients that we could use as a starting point?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was connecting to.
But if there's anything else, like if, if we haven't sent it yet, just voice it now.
Yeah.
But I have the questions that we all developed were pretty comprehensive. Like, there was a lot of duplicates between what people thought.
Yeah, so, okay. With that, is there a motion to enter closed session to discuss appointment, employment discipline, or dismissal of employee?
So.
Moved by Suzanne, seconded by Virginia. Will the Secretary please take a roll call vote, yes or no?
Um, Virginia, yes. Maya.
Yes.
Marjorie, yes. Christina.
Yes.
Suzanne, yes. Matt.
Yes. Ted?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go over to the closed session. Zoom.
I'm gonna take a click back.
Okay.
This is a lot of hours and we need to stop the guests.
Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Thank you for coming. It's a lot of hours.